I'd like to say good morning to everyone. Wow, it's great to see so many of us here today. It is great to see you and happy Valentine's Day to you. This is the Columbus Municipal School Board's regular meeting. Today is Valentine's Day, February 14th, and it's approximately 11:35. This meeting is officially called to order. We do have a quorum present. We have Mr. Jason Spears with us, Dr. Joe Schumake, myself, Yvonne Cox. Mrs. Talisa Young is en route, and Mr. Fred Sparks is not able to be with us today. Now we will move to, excuse me, if you will, please bow with me for your invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, Maker and Creator of everything, dear Lord, we pray to you this morning, and we give thanks for all your blessings that you bestowed upon us. Dear Lord, we pray that you come in the midst of our meeting today. Be a voice in our minds, that we may work together, think together, talk together, all in one accord, so that we can truly do what you would have us to do for the Columbus Municipal School District. Dear Heavenly Father, I pray strength for our district, for our children, our teachers, administrators, all of our employees, dear Father, these essential workers that are continuously working in the midst of COVID. Dear Lord, give us a heart and a mind to know that the changes that are upon us are changes that won't last a lifetime. So we ask in Jesus' name, and for His sake I pray, amen. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now we're moving to item three, which is the adoption of our agenda, policy BBB, policy BCBD, requesting a motion to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Spears, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Dr. Schumake. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Now we're moving to item four, which is, it gives me great pleasure to acknowledge our school board, the members that are here, as well as the board members that are not here. I would like to say congratulations to our school board for another year of supportive leadership to the Columbus Municipal School District. Throughout the state of Mississippi, more than 750 Mississippians are setting the visions and goals for the districts to serve. We, the Columbus Municipal School Board members, we do work to provide quality education for K through 12 students. Our goal is to lead and serve our district and community, and it is important to acknowledge this continuous work that is being done. At this time, we ask for the school board members that are here, if you'd come down front with me, please. This is, I'll say national, this is the Mississippi School Board Recognition Week, the proclamation says, whereas, whereas an excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life of our community and to the economic development of our state, and whereas school board members work to assure that the organizational mission of properly educating students is being achieved by always keeping student achievement as a primary focus, and whereas school board members represent a tremendous resource of local decision makers, diligently working, diligently working to meet the challenges of a dynamic world by ensuring that every student receives the opportunities and services needed for a quality education. Whereas, a school board member establishes a vision for the education program, designs a structure to achieve that vision, assures schools are accountable to the community, and strongly advocate continuous improvement in student learning, and whereas, school boards are proactive, I love it, are proactive in adopting policies that support student achievement, personnel, community relations, and the overall operation of the school district. And whereas, school boards are entrusted with the guardianship of wise expenditure of financial resources, and they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust. And whereas, local school board members are appointed and elected by the people to make decisions most appropriate for their community and deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of service to public education in Mississippi. Now therefore agreed, the Mississippi School Board Association of Directors do hereby proclaim the week of February 13 through 19, 2022, as School Board Member Recognition Week in Mississippi. We urge all stakeholders to join in recognizing the dedication and hard work of school board members and in working with them to create an educational system which meets the needs of all our learners down in the city of Richmond on the first day of February in the year of our Lord, 2022, and of the independence of the United States of America. Wow, that was long, wasn't it? It's signed by the Mississippi School Board, uh, school, Mississippi School Board President and the Executive Director, which would be Cecil, I can't help saying his name, Cecil Labatt.
Labatt.
Labatt, Cecil Labatt, I would call him, I don't know if it's right, Mr. Labatt. Cecil Labatt and our Hon. DeNoto Jackson, Mississippi School Board Executive Director. Much time. Mr. Fox. Mr. Jason Spears. Thank you all very much for your patience and your support. Now we're moving to item five, Teacher Advisory Council Presentation, Dr. Labatt.
We had the teacher advisory council, and we started a platform. We played a vision, a advisory conference, that we were supporting. In terms of the, one of the teachers, the regular by the council's platform, and we put in drawings for the agency partners because they are in good order and they would be the boys and the girls.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity, not only to come and speak with you today, but also to have a teacher advisory council. It's important to hear the voice of all of our stakeholders, and we appreciate being heard. As Dr. Labatt mentioned, we are a teacher advisory council that was recommended by our principals at each school. Not everyone was able to be here today, but if you just want to kind of indicate, I did want to make sure that you heard who is on the teacher advisory council. I'm Heather Rowland, I represent Cook. Also from Cook are Patty Bartley and Tamara Harrison. From Fairview, Sharika Gray and Deja Townsend. From Franklin, Deanna Smith and Fernanda Wyndham. From Sale, Jasmine Carter and Marilyn Chandler. From Stokes Beard, Melody Cunningham and Cabrera Poe. From Columbus Middle School, Carolyn Quinn Hoskins. From Columbus High School, Tiffany Jefferson and Jessica Smith. And from McKellar, Melanie Ford. So if you'd like to give them a big round of applause. We have been meeting with Dr. Labatt and with Ms. Debbie Murray, frequently to be able to voice some of the, some of the concerns or some of the, share some of the celebrations of things that are going on in our schools. And we have also had several of our membership be able to attend a legislative meeting that Ms. Jessica Smith is going to tell you more about. Ms. Smith is an English teacher at Columbus High School, and she's going to share a little bit about our experiences, our experience with the legislative meeting.
Welcome, Mrs. Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In early November, teachers from CMSD attended both in person and virtually the listening session for the Senate Education Chair, Dennis DeBor, and his staff. They held it in Tupelo for the first congressional district, and they held them all over the state. This was the one we attended. Chairman DeBor discussed many of the ways in which he was working to get a pay raise passed for Mississippi teachers and outlined that, what that might look like for us. He also related that our lawmakers in Jackson wanted to increase teacher pay enough that we didn't have to have a second job simply to make ends meet, which was encouraging. It was refreshing to see someone from Jackson speak so candidly to us about our situation and acknowledge that our pay is nowhere near where it should be, and with a plainness that has definitely been missing in this conversation. So we enjoyed that and appreciated it very much. After his remarks, the floor was opened for teachers to express anything they wanted to on any subject, or on the subject of pay raises and school climates. Teachers from all over the area shared concerns that they had about their current pay and the climate in the schools. As a teacher from CMSD, it was interesting to see that all over the area, and according to Chairman DeBor, all over the state, teachers are facing the same issues. Discussions on topics like burnout, overcrowding, supplies, supplements, who gets the supplements, who doesn't get the supplements. And duties were met with comments of agreement, but one topic was overwhelmingly brought up again and again. Time. The lack of it, to be more precise. We've seen this echoed in our advisory council meetings as well. There was a teacher from Tupelo who told the chairman that she knew money couldn't come in today, but he could give us something just as precious. He could give us time. The time to plan, to grade, to clean, to set up, create interventions, and the myriad of other things that we as educators do to ensure our students are getting the absolute best that we can give them. As it is now, these tasks are often done after contract hours, in the evening, on weekends and holidays, and so early in the morning, like so early in the morning. The stress is real, and we want to do the best we can for our students. Give us the time, she said again. More teacher work time during contract hours is universally something teachers express that they wanted in this meeting across the board. I was proud to have been a part of the conversation that led to the pay increase for teachers in our great state, and I hope to have the opportunity to positively affect chains for teachers in this district through this advisory council and the great people that are on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I was sharing with my family, and many of them are teachers and many of them are not, it became, I was sharing with them about some of the work and the conversations we were having with the teacher advisory council and talking about this issue of time. And it became very clear that the people who taught, or had taught, understood what I was saying, and the ones who hadn't were a little less clear on what we meant by time. And so, I'm a, I'm an old drama teacher, so if you'll just permit me to give you this picture. I think it is, even though not everybody is at a school every day, I think everybody has experienced this. Everybody's been to the doctor before, another professional setting. So imagine with me, if you will, if you went to the doctor, and the doctor was the one who was answering the phone, scheduling appointments, taking the blood pressure and temperature, seeing the patients, ordering the shots, giving the shots, writing the prescriptions, doing the billing, filling the prescriptions, calling the patients at home to check up on them, researching new medications, and going to training on new techniques, and all of it during the doctoring day. That's just not how it works. And we know all of these tasks are important. They're important for the doctor because we want to experience as a person going to see a professional, quality medical care. Just as we know that academic and behavioral intervention planning and tracking, intervention paperwork, parent communication, including translating and finding translators for those parents who, for whom English is not their first language, parent literacy meetings, website and social media updating, food backpack programs, fixed assets, library checkout and inventory, first book and other community-related activities, planning, giving, and scoring assessments, planning and preparing for things like PBIS that are so important for students and teachers, teacher collaboration, school testing coordination, special education and gifted paperwork, CMSD training and PLCs, all of that is done by teachers. And you cannot do those things while you are teaching. And just as it's important for a doctor to have those things happening, it's important for us to give quality educational care to our students in our classrooms. It makes us better teachers, it makes us be able to give better services to our students and the parents. Of course, the difference is the doctor's not responsible for all of those tasks, so they all can be done during the school day. And if he or she was, they most likely would also spend upwards of 25% of their regular school day added on at the end of their school day, eating into their personal and their family time, which is not healthy or productive. So addressing these issues of pay and incentives that Ms. Smith spoke about from the legislative meeting, those are important for all of us, especially for attracting new teachers that comes up again and again. And, but addressing the issues of time and work-life balance, that is so important for retaining quality teachers and not having burnout. We cannot tell you- We cannot tell you how important it is for us to be able to have this teacher advisory council, for us to have this time to be able to share freely and safely with the superintendent and with representatives from our central office. It doesn't happen everywhere. And as a professional, to be able to, for all of us, to be able to hear, to be able to be heard, and for what we're saying to be valued, we sincerely thank you for being able to do that. It means a lot. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Can I say one thing before you leave? In acknowledging and understanding everything that you've said, and the cause is just what you are representing, all the teachers here in the district, and you are in, I used to call it the trenches, because I was in the trenches myself, and I remember cooking, helping my son with homework, and calling parents at the same time. So, you still carry it home with you. You know, it's a continuous effort. But just the other day, I was really reading up on that, researching ways, and I came up on this in Ed Week, in Educational Week. It said bonuses are nice, a lot of teachers said, but these things are nice, but they were asking for other things. And a lot of them were things that are tangible, not money as much. The bonuses are great, but actually the time. And they also talked about, oh my, portable air filters even in the classrooms and things. A lot of things that a lot of us in other positions, we may not think about as readily as you do while you're right there in the classroom, but please rest assured that we are here for you and to support you in your efforts. And I think all the board members feel this way, that, you know, we all are supportive of you. Whether I had talked or not, I believe in my heart that I would still be, you know, supporting your every effort. And thank you very much for all the work you do for our children.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to item six, requesting a motion for close determination for executive session, policy BCBK.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Spears. Any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Right now, we are in discussion for executive session.
Policy. Number nine, Board of Education Policy, B C B D, requesting a motion to approve the minutes for January eighth, January tenth, January twenty eighth, January twenty eighth, twenty eighth and January twenty ninth.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young.
Second.
Second, Mr. Spears, any discussion? No discussion, all in favor, please raise your hand here, it's unanimous. Now we'll have Dr. Labat's update.
This is our initial statement, I want this board to know that overall, we are doing forward with this, a pretty good way to Dr. Martin reviews the action steps, he's been giving that information, I'm looking at A woman's work respect the district, but the, the mission is the same, and we move the mission to the vision, right? And then we have a vision to, to, to.
Mm-hmm.
All right, this is our, our goal, to drive, to develop data-driven decisions to increase student achievement growth, to train, how they continue to back the district. I had a question about that, but we can talk about that later, because you also got recruit outside, you know, but that's good, we're welcome to talk about it. And they started to improve awareness and community engagement, that fiscal proven and transparency, and that means that, because we're very transparent, right? And then we documented that we everything more than ever, fiscal help, this district helping the public, open, and housing, yeah, a new appointment to the Maslow Board, would you like to tell them about that as we talk about that?
Well, you know, the Maslow Association is the, this is the Association of School Business Officials, and I received a call about two weeks ago asking, if they voted for me, would I accept the position? And it was, well, it's coming a little bit of a whirl, but I said, sure, if, if that's the direction goes from there, I would honor it. And she said, they were all going to need to bring campus back to their board, and called me that Friday, because we went out Monday morning. And on Tuesday morning, by like eight thirty, they called me and said, we were just talking, and we, the name was thrown out, and we all just said, that's okay.
Congratulations. That's great news.
Officially, we're representative of District One for Maslow.
That is awesome.
That is awesome. We included the teacher advisory council, we put up the post board in the over break room, we let the district team, the principals, the advisory council, and the principal coaches to get input on each of the goals, and then we convinced it, we all asked to talk to Martin, send him the information, we'll be sending the report. So we got it, we're definitely to give y'all stuff on Friday, and then we put it in power, we have ledex, we go through the background, so we have all that information. And, and so we can focus on the goals established, you gotta pull that from everybody, and stakeholders to. All right, so develop data-driven decision, increases achievement, we are data-rich district, we have official team members in the report, strategic him, we have U D benchmark back, back out the data, and personal data.
Can't see it.
You all should have all that data information.
I have stigma with my left eye, is there any way, and I know you can't do it now, I'm just gonna listen, could you sort of make that print a little larger? Say, like, like they say, is that proficiency?
Yes, yes.
Comparison, is it, yeah.
And, and, well, you have access.
Oh, God.
Thank you.
Well, all right then.
Proficiency comparison report, that's the report that is sent to you?
Uh-huh.
That you look at the comparisons?
Yeah.
And this is the diagnostic diagnostic test, and here's the predictive mission to you?
Yes.
Okay, strategic planning meeting that helps us quantify this data, I would also say that when we did our district meeting, we had our data in front of us. We had all the district data from here to report that you all had to help make our decision. And this can be all suggestions for academic achievement, so that was our whole. We flee benchmark and diagnostic data, like I said, we are data-rich school district, and we have some great data, we had a Principal Data Strategy meeting last week, and we said we made all the work, you know, the four, four main things that we need to do to improve student achievement, then looking at systems, system development, what we need to start with direct instruction, what should we do for after school performance, you know, we had four teams, we looked at every strategic thing that we need to do academically within our, how should we look? What should we do in teaching, what we should do about assessment, what should we do with the basic curriculum, what do we do before that, do we need to pace the guys? You know, looking at next year, if we're going to finish the curriculum year, having a stop or, or diagnostic test, okay? Probably over twenty or thirty things, this is my area, I love it, but we are really, if I'm looking at where we are with the predict this proficiency, if we roll likely, I think we are going to roll, it's going to be a great year, amazing year, and then work will speak for itself. All right. Devell, Devell, hey, hey, he's going to make a theater meeting too.
That's all right.
Okay. So any questions to that?
Magic.
All right, and then we can email them, all right, so this is what we, we, they're not going to go off on their own, okay? This is the recruitment of highly effective teachers, so as everybody knows, we did a national board certification program, leverage federal dollars, and which will be working with our teachers that are no senior, right? And giving them opportunity to make six thousand dollar additional salary from the state, right? And also improving their instructions so they have reflective teaching, right? So they can keep this, stay here and help us with our new teachers, because we have over almost a hundred fifty, sixty teachers that are four years, that we have a very young district, and that is excellent achievement, so that initiative to keep them here and keep them reflective of their instruction, okay? Teacher Teachers Club, all about it, that's a long time, we did that last spring during the pandemic, did a lot of work with W recruiting, and had a huge hype on, they just recently had a roundabout, which developed the teachers, we are came those to do the other, they absolutely loved it, they're doing professional development. Actually, M D is working with us every week, because it's a premier program, we kind of did it differently, we didn't take it every week, everybody else was doing, we kind of innovated, so like that. We looked at it very, very differently, and so our, our Teacher Teachers Club is not like any other clubs in the state of Mississippi, and M D is very interested in how we can do it, because we love it, it's high interest, and we talk about gap kids, so, you know, being a kid, a kid who needs a station has to choose between T E music or being a teacher, right? And so this is an open entry club, and all, everybody that wants to participate can participate, right? They have a mentor, right? They, they go to professional development, they are constantly communicating with their mentor, and then they journal, they journal a lot of things that they're learning, something that they wish they would have done in a first year, right? And we also put that kind of mentality in a mentor mentoring program, which M D really likes that we do, they're really working with us, and that's some of the programs we probably have. I mean, these programs, this, the processing systems work, right? And it is very meaningful, intentional, because important amount of time, this is very important, but our mentor mentoring program is going well, that's why our new teachers are retaining, we're going to keep the metrics, you know, and so this is, our, our, we did all this flash.
Yes, that's, that's great, I was worried about, you know, new teachers, when you first hire them.
And we're going to recalcerate, because we're like we said, we do it like everybody else did it, you know, we kind of did our, our own program, and we're going to be working on this, and recalcerate, and some of the professional development, and get people, we did all this flash, the planning board all last year, like last year, so all this takes a lot of time and work, but this is our plan for all our students to, 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 and make sure they get, any questions? And this has been on the spot, and we, every time we talk about this. All right, and the strategy to improve awareness and community engagement, we've had twenty-four parent meetings in, in the last year, and we have about six or seven parent meetings, we continue to innovate and have parent meetings, for, for our employees, I mean, for our community, and we call it parent community, because not just parents are raising kids, and it takes the community to develop the school district, but like I talked about, the community is in the right for trust, this is going to reflect the school question. We have a ward tour coming in, I'm a ward, y'all are warding, right? Ward tour's coming up, which will be in the community, discussing some of the great things that are happening, if we have seen after we got the board, so all the questions, I'm always ready. I'm, I'm, I'm better informed, too, that's why when I'm, when I write a speech, you know, it's okay, if you give me prompt, I'm going to be in turn first, I'm excited about, you know, all the questions, they're kind of new, we're just that. But the ward tour, we're excited about the thinking, the learning, all the feedback, we're going with this, we'll have the high school principal with us answering some questions, but we're excited about, any questions about that?
When will this?
When do they start, oh, sorry.
It starts in the February.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind just catching one or two.
Yes, yes. Their community and for parents, right, they should be able to make sure about, they should give information out there, this program is just, kind of slow down that kind of, kind of, but. Parenting, we need to talk these, continue to go well, we're going to have to do a special thing, as the most come up, excited about that, how do we need to, 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 community accountability, you got, should we got? The, the business list, right? And you saw how hard benefits work is, it's not, you know, an excuse for accountability, it's very much, very difficult, much harder. And the thing that's better about community accountability than regular accountability, is integral things that you do with students and parents, you get this, right? Sometimes people don't give you a roadmap, but if you do the things in the list, every, every high form district, how to start it is intensive, how to form a school district, say, I continue to be an A, and I'm not A. Because I'm not doing well my, my stuff, with African American males, with that, I'm not hitting the mark, everybody that's achieving at my A school are kids that should be achieving. This is how community accountability started, and I'm thinking more integral, and me, as the needs of all students, what schools should do, right? That's how community accountability started, and so now the, now in the high forms, so I had to really, had to step up and say, I'm not really an A school, you know what I mean? We're missing the mark five, you know, we, we have twenty-five percent of talent, we not meet our needs, and the kids that are supposed to do well are doing well. So if you look at the integral benefits, and I hope you have all received, it's integral curriculum work, relationships work, community work, all the stuff that really went into this. And now we're working on it to what degree, and now it's, all the principals have been working, calling in the last year, they're doing book studies, understanding, understanding if it works. If you look at the community accountability benefits, these are things that probably have to be, but if you look at them, either kind of relationships that were different, these are kind of questions that were asked, direct response to curriculum, building relationships, P E I, it's the things that we should be doing, so it just gives a platform and indicators, and you measure yourself. And one thing the principals have learned was this, you can't just do it as a checkmark and say, I do P E I S once a month, and it's done. So the question is, to what degree are you doing it? And so they also are warning systems, because you say, is this filtered throughout this, throughout school? Does everybody at school understand what P E I is, is, are they getting the direct benefits? So just know community accountability is much harder than accountability, because you just teach the test, right? If the kid is supposed to, supposed to get it before, and they know accountability, right? So this checks us to make sure that we are coming schooling in the right way, and the way it should be, so please continue to look over those benefits, and the great school, for schooling. The pillars are very, very difficult, and, you know, I, I, I tell the principals all the time, if you're doing two or three of these really well, in each session, you should be blowing it off, right? This should be really, you should be doing it really, really well, if, if your whole concept of your school are integrated in these particular.
Uh, input on each of the, um, goals. And then we convince it, um, uh, we all have to talk to our consent information. We'll be sitting in the court. So we got it with the defendant to give you all stuff on Friday and then he puts it in power. We have like, we go through the back now. We have all that information, um, and, um, and so we can focus on the goal of the statute. You gotta collect everything everybody, you know, stakeholders did. Questions? Alright, so the devil says, uh, decision increases achievement. We are data rich district. We have, um, official team here in the report, uh, strategic meeting, we have U D, benchmark back, back out the data. And personal data.
Can't see it.
You all should have all that data information.
Can't see it.
Can't see what.
I have, oh, stigma with my left eye. Is there any way, and I know you can't do it now, I'm just gonna listen, could you sort of make that print a little larger? Um, say, like, like they says, proficiency?
Okay, yes, yes.
Comparison, is it? Yeah.
And, and, well, you have access.
Oh, God.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, alright then.
And proficiency comparison report, that's the report that was sent to you?
Uh-huh.
That you look at the comparisons?
Yeah.
Which is the diagnosis, diagnosis, and here's the predictive condition.
Yes.
Okay, um, strategic planning meeting that helps us quantify this data. Um, I would also say that when we did, um, our district meeting, we had our data in front of us. We had all the district data from here to report that you all had to help make our decision. And this can be all suggestions for academic achievement, so that was our whole job. Um, we flee benchmark and diagnostic data, like I said, we are data rich, um, school district and we have some great data. Um, we had a principal data strategy meeting last week, which we could, we made all the work. Do you know the four, four things that we need to do to improve student achievement? Then looking at systems, system development, what we need to start as direct instruction, what should we do for after school programs? We had four teams. We looked at every strategic thing that we need to do academically within our, how we should look. What should be doing to teach the teachers, what we should do about assessment? What should be doing with the basic curriculum? What do we do before that? Do we need to pace the guys? You know, looking at next year if we're gonna finish a curriculum year, having a stop or a diagnostic test, okay? Probably over twenty or thirty things, this is my area, I love it. Uh, but, uh, we are really up, if I'm looking at where we are with the project of proficiency. If we roll likely, I think we are in the role, it's gonna be a great year. Amazing year. And the work will speak for itself. Alright. The devil, the devil, hey, hey, he's gonna make a dinner meeting too.
That's alright.
No, we just did that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So any questions to that?
Magic.
Alright, and then we can email them. Alright, so this is what we, and we, they're not easy to go off on the run, right? Okay, um, this is the, the recruitment of highly effective teachers. So as everybody knows, we did a national board, um, certification program, leverage federal dollars. And which will be working with our teachers that are more senior, right? And giving them an opportunity to make six thousand dollar additional salary from the state, right? And also improving their instructions so they have reflective teaching, right? So they can keep this stay here and help us with our new teaching because we have over almost a hundred fifty, sixty teachers that are four years, that we have a very young district. And then we have student achievement, so that initiative to keep them here and keep them, um, reflective of their instruction, okay? Teacher teacher club, all about it, that, a long time, we did that last spring during the pandemic. Did a lot of work with W, uh, recruiting and had a huge hype on. They just recently had a roundabout with all the, uh, the teachers we are paying those students off. They absolutely loved it, they're doing professional development. Actually, M D is working with us every week because it's a premier program. We kind of did it differently, we didn't take it every week, everybody else was doing it, we kind of innovated. Is that right there? Uh, we looked at it very, very differently. And so our, our teacher club is not like any other clubs in the state of the city. And M D is very interested in how we can do it, we love it, high interest. And we talk about gap kids. So, you know, being a kid, a kid who needs education has to choose between T C E music or being a teacher, right? And so this is an open entry club and all, everybody that wants to participate can participate, right? They have a mentor, right? They, they go to professional development. Um, they are constantly communicating with their mentor and then they journal. They journal a lot of things that they're learning, something that you wish they would have done in the first fifteen years, right? And we have to do, we also put that kind of mentality in a mentor mentoring program. It's what M D really likes every week. They're really working with us and that, some of the programs we call it, I mean, these, these programs, this is the, the processing systems work, right? And it is very meaningful and intentional because it's important amount of time. This is very important. But our mentor mentoring program is going well, that's why our new teachers are retained. We're gonna keep the metrics, you know, and so this is, our, our, we did all this flash.
Yes, that's, that's great. I was worried about, you know, new teachers when you first hire them.
And we're gonna recalcerate, but we're like, we said, we do it like everybody else did it. You know, we kind of did our, our own program and we're gonna be working on it, we're gonna recalcerate, we're having some professional development. We did all this flash, the planning board all asked us like last year. So all this takes a lot of time and work, but this is our plan for all our students to be able to do this. And make sure they get to do it. Any questions? And this has been on the spot and we've, every month, we talk about that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay. Alright, and the strategies improved for our community engagement. We've had twenty-four parent meetings, um, in, in the last year. And we have about six or seven parent meetings, we continue to innovate and have parent meetings for, for, um, employees, I mean, for our, um, community. And we call it parent community, because not just parents are raising kids, and it takes the community to the devil's school district. But like I talked about, the community is in the right group trust. This is a reflective school question. Um, we have the ward tours coming in, I'm a ward, y'all are warding, right? Um, ward tours coming in, which will be in the community discussing some of the great things that are happening. It'd be a scene after we got the board to all the questions, I'm always ready. And, and, I'm, I'm, I'm better at prom, too, that's why when I'm, when I write a speech, you know, it's okay. If you give me a prompt, I'm gonna be in turn first, I'm excited about, you know, all the questions, they're kind of new, we're, we're good at that. But, uh, so the ward tour, we're excited about the thank you to the mayor and all the team that was going with us. We'll have the high school, the principal with us answering some questions, but we're excited about the community to do that initiative, any questions about that?
When will this?
When do they start? Oh, sorry.
They start in the February.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind just catching one or two.
Yes, yes, they're, they're, they're community or parents, right? There's the information about Hunt, they have people information out there. This company is just, kind of, um, slow down that kind of, kind of, we, the parent group, we need to talk to these, continue to go where, we're gonna have to do a special thing as the months come up, um, excited about that. How do we need to see the, uh, community accountability, do you got, should we got? The, the business list, right? And you saw how hard the business list is? It's not, you know, infused or accountability, it's very much, very difficult, much harder. And the thing that's better about community accountability than regular accountability is integral things that you do with students and parents, you get that, right? Sometimes people don't give you a roadmap, but if you do the things in the list, every, every high performance district, how does starting is intensive. High performance school district say, I continue to be an A and I'm not A. Because I'm not doing well my, my stuff, with African American males, with the students, I'm not hitting the mark. Everybody that's achieving at my A school are kids that should be achieving. This is how community accountability started. And I'm thinking more integral and meet, as the needs of all students, what schools should do, right? That's how community accountability started. And so now the, now in the high performance, I hadn't really, had to step up and say, I'm not really an A school, you know what I mean? We're missing the mark by, you know, we, we have twenty-five percent of talent, we not meeting our needs. And the kids that are supposed to do well are doing well. So if you look at the integral benefits, and I hope you have all received, it's integral curriculum work, relationships work, community work, all the stuff that really went into this. And now we're working on it to what degree and now it's good. All the principals have been working on this for the last year. They're doing book studies, they're understanding if it's the work. If you look at the community accountability benefits, these are things that probably have to be changed. But if you look at them, these are the kind of relationships that were different, these are the kind of questions that were asked, direct response to curriculum, building relationships, P D I, it's the things that we should be doing. So it just gives a platform and indicators and you measure yourself. And one thing the principals have learned was this, you can't just do it as a checkmark and say, I do P D I S once a month and it's done. So the question is, to what degree are you doing it? And so they also are on the systems because you say, is this filtered throughout this, throughout school? Does everybody at school understand what P D I is? Are they getting the direct benefits? So just know community accountability is much harder than accountability, because you just teach tests, right? If the kid that's supposed to, supposed to get it before and they know accountability, right? So this checks us to make sure that we are coming schooling in the right way and the way it should be. So please continue to look over those benefits and the great school, for schooling. The pillars are very, very difficult. And, you know, I, I, I tell the principals all the time, you doing two or three of these really well in each session, you should be blowing it off, right? This should be really, you should be doing it really, really well. If, if your whole concept of your school are integrated in these particular pillars very strongly, then good things are gonna happen. And, and the principals are gonna break down that. We have the U W meeting, we have that next fall, we had D J Jackson State University on March twenty-third, really excited about that. Um, and planning has some, um, other events, other school, other, other, um, higher education initiatives around the year.
So the, the J S U event, you said that's in March?
March.
Okay.
And then come on, therefore, basically, we just, here. These are some of the meetings that we had. Those have been about our slide. These are some of the recommended values for improvement and transparency, like I said, this has been, been, um, and you can send this to the board as well. Okay, good, alright. Um, these are the valuable, uh, values for transparency. These are things that are, Dr. Martin, we will do, and they will come together collectively and go over what the action steps are and the strategies for the other goal. So that was thinking about all students with that. Uh, these are some of the things that we went over, and we continue to add to that list. Um, the collective among us lines, which we are, the process of doing with community, the community is really coming together and contacting us really want to work with us about some things that we're doing. So this can really focus on students and then the community can move forward and cover them kind of with initiative. It would not only be mentoring and direct actions with kids that we deal with, kids outside of school, mentoring, um, programs, um, putting that program volunteer work. You know, just have people that are in that home and love community, willing to work, and our focus on the right things in order to move forward. And they're excited and working with so many people in the community and, uh, I thank God that they came to us and they work collectively. Because when you're doing this work and doing it, you know, with, with parts, sometimes you feel alone, it's a lot of people that come up, they're doing some good things. And now we're just all coming together and go out together as, as a team, so very excited about the, uh, collective among us line. I was talking about the proactive process for retribution, this organization, a circle of different people and having, um, those entities within the school district, but inviting people from the community. Are there any questions? And that's our bump guy, Mr. Dito. And it's very hard to say that we met, since we've been shot for ten years, and since we've been in the right toward following the shooting. And, you know, we're only, I have to say, we're a record trust, we're a reflection of community, this is hard work, this is tough, you know, we have, you know, we did it shot for kind of adding that lifelong energy. We work with that, um, we're through, we shouldn't fool the state, you know, and we're working with the community, with other organizations, um, to help our kids, to help sell our kids. Any other questions? And all the information that generally given in the report and sent, it was sent through the emails and we were like, we need twice. Those are part of talking about streamlining that information, making sure we get it to you and, and moving forward, any other questions? I'll come over. Cause y'all know their strategic planning meetings and everything you focus towards the goal, unless you're consistent goals, you get report information in and you ask about goals. Any questions related to that? With the goal?
No, it's just, it's just me too.
Oh, yeah, me too. So then as we continue, we do more things, we all under the goal, and our focus will be on the goal. And then we're reporting to be on the list, so are there any questions about that?
No. I'm on target. Anybody else has any questions? Thank you very much. Very good report.
Alright, and, and Dito is in charge.
Who's in charge?
Oh.
Yeah, she's getting it late.
Oh.
Okay, so, board, did anyone have any, uh, comments, anything? Alright, safe travel, Dr. Labat. Oh, let me come out of here. I went to my email, watching, uh, reading, um... Getting my notes together. Okay. So right now, we're at item C, the, uh, trustee, uh, travel review. Uh, some of the trustees, we will be participating, we haven't been anywhere to report on, but we will be participating in a virtual conference on the twenty-first through the twenty-third of this month. School Board Association's annual conference, we'll participate virtually. Uh, now we have number two, discussion and consideration of our capital improvement plan, Mr. Little.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
We've got right now six open P O's. Uh, got J B Construction for those, they got the bleachers gone, but we're still trying to get the storage buildings moved. The L S Technologies, the speakers for the baseball field, that has been completed, I just received the invoice on that from the time I sent things to y'all until now. Uh, the basketball speakers, they have the speakers up, we're still waiting on one part. Uh, they have loaned us a part so that our speakers will work, ours was, uh, back ordered, so, but they are working and the new speakers are up. Uh, Smart Technologies, we're still waiting on C Spire to, uh, get a module to us so we can use, uh, the telephones to use with the intercom system. But everything else is working, we're just waiting on that last module to come in.
Is that a, or, an item that's on back order?
It's something that C Spire has to give us.
Okay.
And it allows us to use our, use the telephones, like in the principal's office and several offices around the school, uh, if something goes on. We do have all calls with the handheld radios, but once we get this module in and if something does happen or if they need to make a quick announcement, they can go into any office, pick up a telephone and make announcements.
Okay.
Alright, the, uh, we've got Cook Development, Joe Morgan, they're both for Franklin. Uh, we've been waiting on the roofing project to get started, they should be started today. And as they go through, Joe Morgan Company will repair the wood that is rotten. And then Cook Development, they're gonna work, Joe Morgan and Copper Top are gonna work together as far as when they get to a point, they'll call Joe Morgan, he'll come in, fix what's gotta be fixed. They get to a certain point, Cook Development will come in and they'll start doing the painting back behind them, so we do not have new exposed wood as long as we can help, before it gets paint put on it. Uh, y'all should have received an updated copy of this several weeks ago, new computers. Uh... The athletic facilities, as I said, we got the speakers completed, but on, I think it's page four, the pressure washing of all the concrete, uh, the bleachers and everything out there has been completed over the weekend. Just received the invoice on it this morning, so we can scratch that one off, I think that's page four.
Mm-hmm.
That it's on. Uh, and on page one, I missed this, it should have been taken off a while back, the trash was all cleaned up around the dumpster and the, those little things that were laid around. And then the repairing of the concrete, that was done sometime back. I just missed that one. But that's on page one. And everything on this chart that you have has been color coded, it's been updated. Uh, I think I updated it two or three weeks ago and then sent to Ms. Woodard and she passed it through. So has anybody got any questions?
I, I have one little question, I hope it's little. Wanted to see where we are on pressure washing the buildings.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just, I noticed that, um, Mr. J C, he put, you know, all the, the new website is up, but our buildings are still, you know, they look a little, um, very discolored, the paint. You know, a lot of the mildew still on the side of the buildings.
Right now, we have Stokes Beard, uh, we're working to get the P O on it, we've already had the two bids on it. And the guy that was doing the baseball field didn't wanna bid on anything else until he got completed with it, cause it was a pretty, he was by himself, it was a pretty good project that he went through. Uh, so that is the next thing. And plus, we're kinda, we're probably gonna be more like into the summer, uh, because testing will start, you know, within the next month or so, and we're not gonna fool with that, so... But that is something, we've already started, we've got Stokes Beard done, that's, it's gonna be concrete and the school at one time.
Okay.
Uh, and then we're gonna, I've gotta get with them again and get them out to go to the other schools and give me some quotes on it.
Okay, thank you.
Can, can I ask you a question real quick about the new signs?
Mm-hmm.
You know, we were looking at new signs for the schools?
Mm-hmm.
It's, okay, so have we started on that?
We have, uh, me and, uh, myself and Coach Davis have, we're working together on that. And we've, we've come up, came up with a picture of, uh, kinda like what we're looking at right now, is gonna show it to Dr. Labat and get her remarks on it.
Mm-hmm.
And then, uh, he's also, right now, we've called, uh, what is it, Missy B Sign, out on one eighty-two at the Alabama line. They're giving us a price on what one would cost, and then I think we counted up ten or eleven in the district that, that we would need. And we're wanting them all, you know, all be uniform, all be the same, and, and all that. So we're waiting on pricing on that and then to get an approval of the design.
Okay. Any other questions? Board member, Ms. Spears?
Over at, uh, Union Academy, and it's been for some time, over, I think, on the dumpster side on the front, other side, that parking lot's pretty crumpled up too. Um, is there any way that can be smoothed down? I mean, I hate to put it that...
It's, uh, I've tried to get in contact with, well, I think it's Southern Paving. They do small jobs like that, uh, what's gonna happen? I've had it checked, the eight-one-one to make sure we know where the gas line is, uh, before somebody comes in and starts digging it up. It is something that I've been looking at. Uh, I gotta find a company that'll do a small enough pave job, or do we wanna come in and with concrete do us better than paving? Cause the front of those trucks are so heavy, uh, when they come in and that's just marring it up. So it is on the list, but I just haven't got a price on it yet.
And, and the same thing over at, uh, Union Academy is, I know that we had put money after we had to switch from the high, uh, from Hunt over and different things. And I've noticed that there seems to be some wear coming back as far as rust bleeding through the metal post and stuff out front that had been repainted and everything. I mean, as far as that type of maintenance, do we have a schedule of evaluating? I know we're doing these capital improvements, but as far as like an ongoing schedule of maintenance when things like that happen to be...
Well, something like that, when they come through and pressure wash it, they may be able to get that off. Uh, and if not, we'll just have to go back and, you know, after they pressure wash, cause I'd hate to, you know, put fresh paint on and then come through and pressure wash it. But, yeah, that's something to look at too.
That was one of my comments about ongoing maintenance, because for the last one or two years now, we've been doing, you've been doing so many different things throughout the district and throughout the school as far as, um... So is, will there be any time coming up soon when you begin to look? Uh, I know you got a schedule for the ongoing upkeep of everything that you've been doing, but will there be any time that we can start looking at, um, the central office building? Like the, the outside, you know, the trim around the building? Cause we have, I notice we have consultants coming in all the time, in and out of our building, and, you know, we sort of wanna keep that up too. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we can, we can walk around it and make a list. Uh, I know we do have some areas, you know, with the awnings and stuff like that, trying to get it fixed. Uh, the pressure washing was gonna happen, and then it kinda, the guy backed out on it, cause he had some other jobs that came up. Uh, so that's gonna be part of when we go around and start doing the pressure washing of the buildings and everything, they'll do the sidewalks and the buildings here.
Oh, I have, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That kinda brought my mind back to, um, we talked about several, the parking lots needed the striping. Um, and where we were on that, had, we had opportunities to look into that, or we're waiting on pressure washing to be done first.
No, most of, uh, a lot of the parking lots that we have need major repair done to them.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there are some areas that we could paint and some areas that are just broken up so bad. Uh, what we've had to do is, I've ordered some slag and we've just started filling in holes as we can. Uh, like the high school, there's really no sense in pressure washing it, I mean, striping it.
Striping it, yeah, that's true.
Fairview's the same way, they've got some big holes, uh, in their driveway, uh, and, you know, we've just got several schools that are that way. And as far as getting people, you know, like, right now, they're just not interested in doing, that's, that's another one of those summer projects that I'm looking at right now. Just like painting on the inside of schools.
Gotcha.
We just go ahead and try to get prices and then we set it up for the summertime. Less cars, less traffic, no buses or anything coming through.
Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to, uh, number three, discussion of the Hunt Campus Recovery, uh, review of expenditures and reimbursements. Um, Mr., Dr. Dito and Mr. Taylor Gills, how you doing, Mr. Gills?
Good.
Good.
So, um, can you, okay? So, things are moving, we have some good news today to, to report. Uh, we, Archives and History has approved, uh, to replace all the old windows in the school and allow us to move forward with the hazard mitigation grant. Um, that was huge, Archives and History has a policy of, of not allowing us to replace old steel windows. These windows in Hunt are, are fifty, seventy-plus years old, uh, they're, they're, many of them are broken, frames burnt, bent, handles missing, they're just, uh... But be able to, to have all new windows for every window in that campus is just huge, so it took a lot of work to get there, but we got the letter last week, before that, to FEMA. FEMA's still moving forward, now they got this letter that they can keep, keep moving forward with their, uh, they'll update the project worksheets and, uh, end result would be that FEMA will obligate the funds for us to, to move forward. So, right now, it's back in FEMA's court, uh, we got, had the insurance settlement, uh, we sent that to FEMA, it was in FEMA's court. FEMA came back to us, saying we need Archives and History to, to, to agree to replace the windows, so we've got that now, so now it's back in FEMA's court. And me, Dr. Dito will be on M E M A and FEMA, uh, almost daily to get this done as quickly as they can. So hopefully, next, next, uh, meeting, we'll have a, hopefully have a time, timeframe when that funding will be, um, available and obligated, so... That's it. Another thing that, uh, that Stephen Little mentioned, we have, we did finally start today on the Franklin Academy, uh, that roofing there, so they started the east side, so that's also good news, so... But that's it, uh, on, on that. Contacters still holding this price, uh, so far, so I'm looking forward to hopefully getting that thing awarded soon.
Yeah, I know, it's tedious. And I think, uh, when I drive out there and see some, see something going on, I think I'll call everybody.
Yeah. But these windows are huge, to be able to have a whole, because Annex Building is, uh, the windows, it's two-story building, the windows go from the floor to the roof. And to have that whole structure re-glazed is just a huge, and they're impact resistant glazing, that'll be safety for the kids that are in that school. And also energy efficient, you know, they're insulated glass, and so it's, we're gonna be a big savings to the district, uh, u- utility cost wise and also for the kids.
Yes. Alright. Board, that's your mate?
I know you can't give us a start date, but...
I will be, my goal is to be able to give you a start, good, cause this hurdle with Archives and History was huge. Archives and History moved slowly and they don't like replacing, so, but, but now that we have that in place, I think I can push FEMA for, for a, a schedule when the, when the funds will be obligated. And then the district can decide to go forward or not go forward, so, but the, uh, so hopefully, next March tenth, at the meeting in March, we'll be able to give you that schedule.
Okay, I mean, I was just, my question was, if everything lines up correctly, and you... Okay, I mean, I was just, my question was, if everything lines up correctly, and you can, all the pieces are in place, and give us, I mean, we, I don't know what we have to do to say, okay, go. Then after that, how long would it take to actually see dirt moving, or?
Oh, it made it within, within two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah, within two weeks, so I'm hoping, you know, now that we have this, this, this piece, it, it, this piece is huge with Archives and History, but the, um, I would think a reasonable timeframe would be next meeting in March, update the board on, give them a timetable, then I'm hoping at that April meeting, we'll be able to say, here are the numbers, here's FEMA's funding, here's insurance money, here's district auto PACA expense, and then go board, uh, board would, would then have that, that information to go forward, and then after that, it would be pretty quick, so, so.
Okay.
We're still, we're still excited about this, cause it's, uh, it's been a long, long fight. We, we basically fight one, one bat at a time, first with insurance, we got that through, and now Archives and History, not, it's just, just their policies, we got that waived, and so now we're, we're, we're moving forward.
Okay, quick question.
Yes, sir.
So, as, as far as the, um, insurance being done, do we know when they're going to be sending the funds? They're already in the bank, okay? Okay, I just wanted to verify that. Secondly, okay, good. Secondly, um, when you start looking at build time, is there gonna be some where it's gonna be just everything happens simultaneously? Or are you gonna say, well, we're gonna start on the front, and then we'll go to Annex, then the gym? What has been the overall?
I would, I would think they would, they would do it simultaneously, I think they'll have a crew, they'll go ahead and, and I'm sure when they get to it, they'll probably pick, pick one, one building, I imagine probably pick the, the front building and demo the windows and work their way around, I would think, how they would do it, um, I'm not real sure, but, uh, but, but they, they would probably start it, but one bill, other four buildings, and then work their way around it.
Now, on the backside, you know, the fencing and different things, will there be a different fencing that will go up and be erected?
Yeah, we do, do have different fencing that goes around the backside, it goes along the south side there, so that, 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 that encloses a courtyard there, so nice, 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 nice aluminum fencing and columns, that would be the, the, the bus drop off on that, on that east side. So your defenses were tied into the, the original building on the front, and go down that, uh, south side, and you'll go, go back around to the, uh, what was the, uh, what was the Hunt, Hunt, Hunt Museum, so all that would be fenced in.
Okay, and as far as, you know, paving and different things, which I know is usually your last thing, is that?
Yeah, that's all, yeah, we, we, new paving, uh, uh, new ADA, accessible sidewalks, all entrances to the building, so that'd be the last thing they would do.
Okay, and as far as if everything is, as Dr. Schumak was talking about, started up, the engine started firing, would that be something to where the school would be online in August of twenty twenty-three?
It would be, yes, yes, so we could go ahead and get started, and, and had the board meeting in April, say, say we, uh, started, you know, had a, had a groundbreaking, uh, first of May, then, then, yes, the, the, the contract time is four years, when they start to be here, so. But ideally, they would finish in, say, say, in, in, in early summer of twenty twenty-three, so you'd have a couple of months to get furniture and equipment and move in for, for that, uh, for that August of twenty twenty-three.
My last question is just because, you know, we had vandals or thieves, whatever you wanna do, I mean, I know that was not part of the initial plan, how does that have to be remedied?
Well, you know, w- once we get the final, uh, once we get the final, uh, in- information from FEMA of what they're gonna fund, uh, cause they might, you know, might have to get the contractor and, and, and look at pulling some things out, but we walked through it with, with, uh, Mr. Little, it was a couple of weeks ago, Stephen, I think it was. Uh, so, you know, all the windows are broken, well, the windows can be taken out anyway, so that, that's no issue. Where we're gonna rewire, have new, new, new service entrance, uh, for electrical, new wiring, so they, they pulled wire, they pulled down weatherheads, that's okay. Uh, we had new plumbing, they, they pulled out copper pipes, so all the vandalism was gonna be replaced anyway, so I didn't see anything that, that would, uh, that wasn't gonna be replaced anyway, so so far.
Additional costs because of that event that happened?
How, I don't think, there's a lot of stuff, they, we, we're gonna just demo anyway, so then maybe they, they might, might, I, I, I'm hopeful it won't be any, I didn't see anything that would be additional cost, they tore down some weatherheads, some of the piping, some of the plumbing, uh, was gonna be replaced, it'll all be replaced anyway, so I, I think so far, as long as they don't tear the buildings down, we're okay. So, but it was, it was, just as soon as the battery that we needed.
And this may be a question for Dr. Dito. Um, obviously, we don't want to have vandalism again while we're building. So have we been thinking of plans on how to secure the site or the year? Well, that doesn't seem to be working too well. I mean, if they're- Okay.
They have that security lighting that, uh, I think the mayor talked to us about?
I don't remember. I, I just, I, I would, I would, if we could just think a little bit more deeply about that, maybe get the community involved, I don't know, on, on, you know, somehow making sure that, as sure as we can be, that, that we don't go down that road again. No, that's fine.
I make random drives around the building two, three times a week, if I'm in town or something, I ride by. The main thing is, there's no electricity. When the tornado came through, the city of Columbus came in, and they cut all the poles down, all the transformers, all, everything is gone. Uh, and they're wanting to come in and go underground. So until we can get some power there, I mean, we really have no control over. We, I make sure all the gates are locked, I make sure the fence is up, and things like that. And as far as no electricity, I mean, we, we can't really do anything but ride around and just make sure that the fences, that they don't steal the gates, or like they did last time. So that's basically what we're doing right now. As soon as we get some electricity in there and something gets going, we can possibly put some cameras up, uh, around the outside and things like that, but the main thing is getting some electricity. So, so that we can, I mean, we, we can't even have lights or anything around there, so.
And when would that go in?
Yeah, well, a, a, as, as soon as the contractor is on site, he'll go in, put, put, put a temporary power pole there like you do in any new construction and have power immediately, so as soon as he gets it there.
Okay. Now, questions? You know, uh, once we had talked about, since you, you brought it up, and I know we're using those fences, but, uh, that fence that's around there now, and it's not, I know I'm short, but someone that's tall could probably just jump over it. Could they, could they miss the little?
Yeah, it's a six foot. That's pretty, it's a six foot tall fence, it's, it's a good size, man.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, if they can't just, you know, some kind of way, go around it, they'll have to take it down to get over in there.
Right.
Okay, that, that's what I was wondering, cause to me, everything looks, you know, sort of tall, but if it's something that they can just, you know, leap over, okay. I noticed that type of, um, worked last time I was in Nashville, and they were, uh, doing another building similar to, uh, how Hunt is. As a matter of fact, an older building, and I really wanted to just, and I did take my time to just look very slowly, and, um, sometimes they have a, and we did bring this up before, and I'm sure you'll address it, um, something there so that the community will know, you know, excite us a little bit about what's coming. You know, like a sign or something, letting us know that it's under renovation, da, 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 da.
No, that, that, that's in the, in the contract, the contractor-
That's it, that's, it's coming, it, okay, okay. That's what I was really wanting, something like that, all right, I think we all do. Our community can rest and know that Hunt is going to be rebuilt. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Taylor, appreciate you and Mr. Little, Dr. Dito, appreciate you. Okay, we're moving on to, uh, item four, contract renewal updates. Oops, excuse me. Contract renewal updates, board, uh, do you have any questions or concerns regarding the contract renewal update? Okay, moving right along. We'll move to number, uh, five, which is, uh, let me make sure I'm looking. Consideration to approve the board members to attend the Mississippi School Board's the virtual annual conference that was mentioned earlier, requesting a motion for approval. The motion is made by Mr. Spears, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item six. FYI, for your info, this is something that we have to do annually, board members. We have to go in and complete this doc, complete this Mississippi Ethics Commission statement. Would you please, uh, just take care of that at your convenience? Moving on to item D, goal updates, policy BA. With the goal update on policy BA, let's throw down. The student attendant reports, the student attendant reports. Are there any questions or concerns regarding the student attendant report board? And, uh, we are reminded that Mr. Chapman did give us a presentation, um, in consideration of, um, the attendance that's been happening at, uh, Columbus High School all year. Do you all have any, uh, questions regarding this, comments, concerns? Yes, ma'am? Oh, okay, moving right along. The school safety report. Goal four, the, uh, discipline reports from the, um, from the high school to middle school, elementary, and the elementary schools, do you have any questions regard, regarding this? Yes, sir?
I was, but I did have one question before that. Uh, the, just a quick one, did we used to have a comp, or combined student discipline? Okay. Thank you, yeah, I, I, um, the only reason I made an issue of it is because we know bus discipline is in, is something- Thanks very much, Dr. Dito.
Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Schumak. Moving on to the, uh, dropout report. Any questions, concerns, the safety report, number four. We're at item ten, open forum, policy B C B D. No one's here for open forum, we'll move on to item eleven, officer superintendent. Well, we know that Dr. Labatt is en route now to, uh, Nashville, and she'll provide a conference report for us, uh, during the March meeting. That's March tenth, I believe, at four o'clock. We're moving on down to item B. Superintendent recommendations, consideration, and number one. Requesting a motion to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three administrative personnel salary schedule. Requesting a motion to approve our salary schedule for the, I'm sorry. The motion is made by Dr. Schumak, requesting a second. I'll make the second, any discussion?
Yes, um, is there, is there any way we could get a point of reference for what the numbers were last year? Because there were several positions, um, that are being recommended every year, and I noticed we've talked about other, um, salaries that we need to look at for the, for the year. Okay, so this was no change in there? Okay.
Okay. All in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Those are very attractive sk, uh, salaries, Ms. Rogers. Phew, could've been like that back in my day. All right, I'll move on to item number two. Uh, yeah, all right, okay, number two, consideration and a discussion to approve human resources, the, uh, personnel items. Requesting a motion to approve our personnel.
Some moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Spears, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item twelve. Office of Business Management. Ooh, eye itching, excuse me. Consideration to approve the financials, uh, board, we're requesting a motion to approve the fund balance, cash balance, budget status report, monthly revenue budget report. The, uh, monthly expenditure budget report, and these certification and summary of reconciled statements. Requesting a motion to approve these budget items.
Some moved.
Okay, the motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. We're looking at number, uh, item G, monthly at Valorn tax a- analysis report. Uh, do you have any comment, board?
I do have, sorry, Dr. Schumak. Well, those numbers are not exciting, um. That makes me comfortable, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schumak. Item H, CMSD fund balance trends. Bank cash balance yearly comparisons. Okay, my computer is going on. The athletic events report. We're moving on to item K, consideration and a discussion to approve the budget amendment. And I, um, board, I asked that we approve the, um, fixed access disposals, the reven, reserved fixed access disposals, claim dockets at this time, requesting a motion.
Some moved.
Motion is made by Mrs. Young. Requesting a second. I'll make the second, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous. Moving on to item O, federal programs and IDA monthly financial reports. Board, do you have any questions, concerns regarding the financials for the, uh, IDA and federal programs? Okay, moving on to item D.
Ma'am?
Oh, okay.
Just one clar, clarifying question for me.
Okay.
I know that with all these ESER programs and things, have they really rolled out all the guidance and, and everything? That kind of gives you a lot more clarity of how and what can be, these funds can be utilized for as?
Yes and no. Well, as the conference last week, I remember a little bit about it. We had different sessions talking about that whole budget. And there were some things that we might be able to, but I don't think we can discuss. And I worry you won't have that restriction. Again, it's going to come down to wording, again, it's going to come down to, who can build up parking beds, your contacts. Um, Dr. Page, you know, have various, uh, interest in the state, that's why we're moving their exemplars, that's why we're hoping to be done. So we're researching to see how they, I know there are things that they did at all. I don't want to say too much about that.
Well, and any of the guidance, has it come out where we could repay parking lots and have wider spaces because of COVID? Possibly.
All of these ESER plans, you have to do with the response to COVID. It has to be everything COVID related.
I can't get back in here.
As far as to the prevention of parking lots, no.
That's all right, I got it, friend. I just double checking.
And I don't know how they use it. Because at first they said, yeah, it's important to your wording, right? And then everyone just kept talking about, oh, great, it's going to help, and then we have all of them. They were like, oh, man, and they were using whatever they want. But there is a space that's just, or at this point, it's not very clear. So Dr. Page, I don't know if you will be able to answer.
Well, I was just joking about the parking lot thing, you know, just wider spaces separating, but maybe, right?
It would be nice, wouldn't it?
Uh, if they are needing for work on the staff, and ESER break is being, they are needing,
Um, I do have one quick question. The district that's been approved for this, can it be unapproved by a higher power?
What could potentially happen is in years from now, if they're being audited, they may take it out of the way?
Pay it back?
It may be.
With interest? Yeah.
It may happen, it may be relevant to you.
That's what I thought, okay, just throwing that out there.
That's why we want to make sure that we're so careful, that we're not just re-aging that, like, really depressed.
Thank you.
It really does, it is a little bit like, Dr. Page, you know? It cannot be gradarian. I would still be comfortable with the gradarian, we've been in much.
Thank you.
Okay. I lost that, but, uh, let me ask, so we're at item P. Consideration and a discussion to approve a transfer of funds from Fund eleven twenty-one surplus until eleven sixty-eight for athletic meals in the amount of twenty-four two hundred, requesting a motion to approve.
Some moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Moving on to item Q. All right, the ESER report card. Okay, we've been discussing that already. Uh, board, do you have any other discussion? Okay. Moving on to item, the sixteen section properties. Any discussion, questions regarding sixteen section? Moving on to item thirteen, the consent agenda, policy B C B L, all right? Uh, yes, sir?
Do we have to do any action on these sixteen section leases or anything? Okay.
I didn't see anything that required an action, was it?
Well, no, I mean, all I was, the only reason I asked, because I just saw the one that we talked about a little while back, is the, one, two, three, four, uh, six went on the list.
Oh, mine, my, on my laptop, it ran out, my time ran out, and it wouldn't take my password. So I'm only looking at my agenda that's printed.
That'd be Tennessee Tom Bigby.
Tennessee Tom Bigby.
No, it's the Stephen.
Stephen D Lee.
Yeah, that, that one, because I know we had some debate and things a while back. An issue that had to be resolved. You know what, you remember what I'm talking about? It was like the, I'm not.
Let me see, can I get in there?
You're going crazy.
It was something about that, that the lease should have been adjusted, it wasn't, and then there was all.
It's like it told me I'm tired.
But what I'm asking is like, on this report we're getting here, that annual rent is correct. Because it shows an, a dollar amount, says annual rent has twelve hundred fifty dollars. Well, I, okay, yeah, no, I understand that part. I was just asking, like, this amount is correct, because obviously, we wouldn't want to get into that situation down the line either. Okay, okay.
Okay. By the time I got back in there, thank you for letting me back in, computer. I'll just put it that way. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Everybody is ready, uh, item number thirteen. The monthly policy reviews, policy BD, policy BDB, policy BDE. Consideration and a discussion to approve the following policies, uh, during the February fourteenth meeting, which is today. And this policy would be the, uh, regular meeting, policy BCAB, and policy BCBC. Board meeting preparation, uh, requesting a motion to approve these two policies.
Some moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Spears, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. It is unanimous, thank you. Moving on to item number two, consideration and a discussion to approve the following policies during the March tenth, twenty twenty-two, uh, board meeting. And that would be, ooh, we're going down the line. Uh, the policy to rescind the distance online learning, uh, new policies, which would be the bid protest. And we're looking at policy one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And then we're moving to C, which is the current and recommended rented policies that we've been reviewing, board, which is number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen. Requesting a motion to approve.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Spears, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young, any discussion? If no discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to item B, consideration to approve agreements, contracts, memorandums, or understanding out of state, out of state travel and field trips. We have several items on the B part of the consent agenda, um, namely, board, if you've had an opportunity to read over these items, do you have any questions before we go into, uh, requesting a motion? Yes, sir?
Um, the, one thing I was going to ask, are you also taking item number seven, B seven?
Uh, yes, I have printed that out. Would you like to separate them, the items?
No, it's their separate, I just was curious, like, as far as this particular one, like, is it kind of our standard protocol dates and things? Or anything adjusted on that?
I also had a small question.
Okay. What I'll do is I'll take that as, uh, requesting a motion to approve item number one, two, three, four, five, and six at this time.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Spears, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Young, any discussion from item one through six?
Okay, I do.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, item three doesn't have any information on it.
Item three? Let me go now.
It's attached, but it's blank.
Well, what I've got is attached, but there's no cost.
Yeah, there's no cost and no information there. I don't, I'm not sure.
This is the Kissimmee?
Yes, please.
Item number three?
This is the Kissimmee Florida Leadership, Already Leadership Conference. It looks like it's a freebie.
Oh, oh, yes, I noticed that.
Oh, okay.
That's a courtesy to the district. Courtesy to the district.
So it's just approving the out-of-state travel, even though there's?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Those are beautiful incentives.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's through item six. Uh, the motion is made by Mr. Spears, and second by Mrs. Young, any other discussion? If no other discussion, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Moving on to item seven. The, uh, consideration to approve CMSD twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three academic calendar. Requesting a motion to approve.
Some moved.
The motion is made by Dr. Schumate, I'll make the second. Any discussion?
Uh, just my question, I mean, as I?
Yes, sir.
As, as I was looking at it, I mean, I was just making sure, I mean, everything looked like our normal operating.
Yes, sir. It does, I have a printed copy of it.
And I did have a question, if Mr. Spears is finished.
Dr. Schumate?
Yeah, something I noticed that's new from last year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and maybe, Dr. Dito, you can fill us in, early release day professional development and planning. That's on, it looks like it's the third Wednesday of each month.
Each month.
Or Ms. Murray, can you? Right, I just was wondering what early release meant, and I've sort of got.
It's once a month, is that what I'm gathering?
Yeah, looks like.
It is once a month.
So when the, you remember when the teacher council came up and talked about some of the things that they have with planning? This was a suggestion for them to be able to get the work done, that they need to be, get done for all the paperwork that they have to do, some of the PD that we have to get in, and that's what the purpose of that was. That was a suggestion that came from the Teacher Advisory Council when we developed the calendars this year.
So that would be all the teachers?
Yes.
And what is early, how, how does early release work? I'm not familiar with that.
I don't know if they got the exact hours. It will not, it'll be more than a sixty percent day. We still have to get three hundred and thirty minutes of instruction in, that's a state requirement. So, um, that's something that we're still working on, the, the exact release times and everything. Dr. Dito will, you know, work with the principals and everything to get that right with the buses and that type thing.
Right, because schools will, I mean, different schools let out at different times, right?
Right. And, and that'll be, you know, I'm, I'm not going to get in Dr. Dito's lane, I'm.
No, no, no.
Based on the bus business thing, you know, I would probably, we get like, oh, tell you guys, that's the U C. We're trying to go back and get the student. The elementary, the high school, it's been too long. That's, that's what we're working for. Uh, I think, and then we could do that, I'm, I'm familiar with, uh, the Teacher Advisory Group, when they were active, the thing that they needed was some time. And they could teach time, so they paid, anything better than money was the time. So that was one of the things that, uh, the chapter immediately went on to address, was that, that's what this is saying, is going to be in the real time.
Okay, now that sounds like a great idea.
And it'll be a release that will be about an hour, hour and a half earlier than what normal school would be. And then, you know, once Dr. Dito can kind of work through all of that, we'll put that, um, established time out so that parents have plenty of time to know when we're doing what, um, communities will know. You know, for like Boys and Girls Club, if they want, you know, want to run something for students and think that type thing. That's why we wanted it on the calendar early on, so that parents would be able to know. And we did try, I know one of you said something about the third Wednesday, we tried to keep it, sometimes we had to adjust because of days out, you know, holidays and everything, but we tried to keep it so that it was uniformed.
And in mentioning with Dr. Dito, the buses, um, how soon will we be able to start some type of recruitment and look at the salaries for next year? Okay. So we'll know.
Because we put advertising on Facebook, we do, uh, we, it's simply, uh, feel the banner, I would put, the transportation department, uh, as far as, uh, salary goes, we still would have to discuss that with, uh, how we can look at the budget for next year. And looking at how many bus drivers we're actually going to be, we, starting out with thirty-five, but as, as I talked to Mr. Page, uh, that number may, may need to be five more, too. So we have to give him, uh, a check. And any that according to where we are now with student student company. Especially again, as the new crew and the high school, and then we can get some buses there, we transport those students all at one time. Right now, we do have some buses that have to go back to the new crew, to get them to something, to take the double route. So those are some of the things that we're trying to work out.
Great. I, I think it is, uh, I love the initiative for the, uh, Wednesday, early release. It really does not take away from the, uh, time that the students are supposed to be at school. But what it does is offer time for, uh, professional developments without teachers leaving their classrooms through the day for a PD time. It allows for, um, the PLCs to have one-on-one and small group meetings, as well as, uh, administrators. And it gives our people, to me, a specific timeframe or mindset to really look at the, our strategic plan that we've, uh, that is being pulled together and know exactly how you're addressing and when you're addressing all of your goals and objectives. But it gives the teachers time. Teachers need time if they don't do nothing but breathe, take a breather. But at the same time, they need pla, ti, planning time for lessons, individual lessons, group lessons. They need time for the majority of the things and not limited to what the, um, the teachers that were here, what they were saying. Um, sometimes, you know, it's not always in giving me some more money. That doesn't always help me to do my job better, because I'm getting a hundred dollars more every month, you know? But it helps me to do my job better if I feel the actual, I call it hands-on support. And this is providing hands-on support, and it does not affect our, our annual calendar settings. It's, it's really an initiative. If you, uh, look at your successful school districts, this is one of the main strategies that they use, and been using it for years. Columbus did it. We did it, I loved it, because it really helped me as a teacher, and then it helped me as an administrator. But, uh, do you have any other questions or concerns, uh, regarding item seven at this time? You'd be very proud of school district. Okay. And, um, to go on, I'll start with item number seven, and I'll move to item eight.
Oh, we got to vote.
Okay. Okay, I was going to do all of them again. So we'll do this one separately. All right, we have a motion by Dr. Schumate, I made the second. Uh, discussions have been, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you all. Okay. Now I can move to number eight, right? I'll move on to item number eight, proposal for the, uh, after-school academy arts at, uh, SELL. And I'm going to make a run for it again, board. Uh, number nine, and I'll say through eighteen, and then C, which is the date to remember athletics and our board meetings. Right, requesting a motion to approve these items. And.
Some moved.
All right, the motion has been made by Mrs. Young, requesting a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Spears. Is there any discussion about any of these items? There are numerous of items. There are numerous of items, Board. I'm not trying to rush you.
The, um.
Go ahead.
I was gonna ask one question about um, on the boys and girls con- contract.
Yes, sir.
Um. Where it says that um, they should pay three dollars per mile traveled. I mean, is that a pretty standard, I mean, I'm trying to remember back. Okay, all right, all right. Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, the only question I, I have is, is regarding uh number eighteen, the comprehensive need assessment services. Uh, when this particular company, um, they will do this survey, and they'll get uh survey results as far as the district's strengths and weaknesses uh to assist in the um actual development of the proposal, the federal programs proposal. Will the uh Board be getting any um results as to the survey? Oh, okay, thank you, thank you, yes, ma'am, Dr. Schumate.
Yeah, when I was looking over this, I'm sort of confused, it's probably just me. Uh, there are three, there's the memo, and then there are three pages that follow. Uh, the first page is Education Resources LLC, then there's Performance-Based Education Company, which looks like a, another bid, maybe, I don't know. And then there's another Education Resources LLC. What's? What's the one in the middle, Performance-Based Education Company Incorporated? Oh, okay, so you just included all the quotes, but you wanna go with uh Education Resources. Okay, thank you.
Have we already approved our? And that's March tenth. So this has been already approved.
So moved.